Order, could we all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Twyla, the first item.
The roll call, Council Bowie.
Here.
Council Beckford.
Here.
Council Cody.
Here.
Council LaRicheau.
Here.
Council Lund.
Here.
Council Mason.
Here.
Council Pomelo.
Here.
Okay, next item.
Is under public hearings, the tax.
I believe you were going to read the meeting rules.
Oh, would you like me to read this?
Yes, just to give you a refresher of everyone.
Please notice we have provided you with a document on the reverse side of your agenda that outlines some simple meeting rules. If you wish to address the town manager or council, the process is outlined in the meeting rules document. Remember to identify who you are and where you live and to speak clearly into the microphone located at the podium so that the television audience and those here can hear what you have to say. If you require clarification or need immediate assistance with any materials provided at this meeting, please see the town manager or myself. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM on Great Falls TV, public access Channel 7. Please silence your cell phones. Thank you.
All right, next item.
Is under public hearings, the Tax Increment Financing Amendment Presentation.
At this time, our Economic Development Director, Scott Benson, is going to give you an introduction to tax increment financing and what we're proposing. Good evening, Council. Good to be with you again. I'm in front of you tonight to ask that you consider amending the Dingly Press TIF District and Development Program for the purpose of using unsheltered, uh, sheltered dollars to fund the Economic and Community Development Department and other associated development-related expenses for the remaining seven years of this 25-year TIF. Hopefully, that'll make a little bit more sense when we get through with this. Try to make this presentation brief, provide some background material on TIFs in general, and then our proposal in specifics. And it, in the interest of getting through, we certainly, intent of a public hearing is to engage the public, answer any council questions as well. It may be that you'll find the answer, a question prompted by something on Slide 3 by 7, so if I could sort of get through and then if it's okay with you, then we'll talk after. Okay, so let me know if I'm cutting out on the... We'll start with just a quick sort of description of what tax increment financing is. It's a public economic development financing program. It's funded by the property taxes on the incremental new value generated by a development project. Key words there: public, it's a local decision. The financing, that's what it is. It pays for economic development projects and programs, and the incremental is the other key word there, and that's only the taxes on the new investment. That's where the funding comes from. How does it work? It's through, again, local public process. The municipality designates a specific geographic area as a TIF district, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. The value of the taxable property in that district at that time is frozen, and that's called the original assessed value. It's an important number. And the TIF applies only to the new value in the district to be generated by private investment, and that's called increased assessed value, also another important term. So, again, more, how does it work? All of a portion of the increased assessed value generated by the private investment in the district is captured, and the taxes on that captured assessed value funds a municipally adopted development program for up to 30 years. That's the longest a TIF can run. It doesn't, it can be five years, it can be 10, anything up to 30. So we'll talk a little bit about, you know, how we establish a TIF district, and the first thing would be, we define the district boundary. So we've got a piece of commercial property in town and where we know that a specific project is going to happen, and there it is, and just for the sake of storytelling, say it's two acres. And we draw a line around it, and you can see there with that red line, we've drawn a line around our district. Now, that's our TIF district. And so the next step is setting the original assessed value, the OAV. And we say to our assessor, you know, before anything happens on this property, what's the value, taxable value of that, of that district, pre-development? And so he tells us, again, just for the sake of storytelling and easy numbers, let's say it's $100. And so it's important to remember, then, that the taxes on that $100 of original assessed value will continue to go to the general fund for the life of the district. So next step, a private investment occurs. So there's our, our TIF district again, and this time, now we look at it and there's a building on it. And again, for storytelling purposes, let's say it's 15,000 square feet, it's light industrial, 25 to 30 employees. So now we gotta, we gotta calculate the increased assessed value, the IAV. And we say to our assessor, okay, now what's this worth? And so there's our property again, there's our building, and he says to us it's worth $500. Obviously, the numbers would be a greater scale in real life, but... So we look at that, we start with 500, and then we subtract the $100 of original assessed value, and that leaves $400 in increased assessed value. Some, or all of that value, the taxes on that, goes to fund the municipal development So why do we use it? Well, at the end of the day, it's to stimulate private sector investment and job creation. And, you know, here's some fun facts. Lisbon has adopted six TIFs for this purpose since 1993. 163 jobs were retained. Between 250 and 275 jobs were created. More than 38 million in private sector investment was brought about as a result of the establishment of these TIFs. Nearly 26 million in increased assessed value as of the last April 1st. Now, how can we use it? So this is a quick rundown of how TIF monies can be spent. It can be spent on cost of improvements within the district, and that might be new construction or it can be redevelopment of existing buildings, financing costs associated with both, or professional services like engineering and surveying and things like that, administrative costs. We can, in fact, even pay a portion of municipal salaries that go to administering the district. Also, cost of improvements outside but related to the district. So this is something that's going to happen outside our little box there, but it's, it's brought about or related to that district. It might be infrastructure facilities, a sewer line, a water treatment plan. It might be public safety improvements like, like traffic lights. It might be mitigation of district impact. Typically, that's like a, an environmental thing. I can think of a great example up at the Bangor Mall. They did a TIF up there. The large sheet of asphalt created an environmental concern in nearby stream, and they were able to use TIF funds to mitigate that impact. And then lastly, and this is, we'll reflect back on this in a minute, but the costs related to economic development, and this is a town-wide thing, it's not restricted by the district. So you can pay for economic development programs or, and/or events as developed by the municipality. You can capitalize loan programs, you can do skills development and training for, for employees in your, in your town. You can do childcare programs even, or trail improvements. And, and I know we've got an important trail in our community. I want to just have a caveat to that last thing. That is relatively new rulemaking, and it's related to trails that have a significant economic development component, and I'm thinking of snowmobile trails up north where those trails alone generate a local economy. We don't, we're not in that position here, so this likely wouldn't apply to us, the trail improvements anyways. So secondary benefit, though, to using TIF, and that is to shelter against adverse adjustments to state subsidies and county taxes based on a municipality's total valuation. Now, the municipality's total equalized assessed value as of April 1st every year is used to compute general purpose aid to education. That's your state education subsidy. State revenue sharing, and then county taxes. Talk a little bit more about adverse adjustments. Really, the key thing here, state subsidies change inversely to value, county taxes change directly. So that's just a way of saying, a total value, as total value increases, the municipality will realize a decrease in education and revenue sharing subsidies and an increase in county tax obligations. So therefore, new tax revenues resulting from a development project, in fact, become reduced through a loss of those subsidies and increased county tax. Let's take a look at what that might look like. Just a fictitious example, let's say there's $5 million of new assessed value on our top line. At our current mill rate, that's $105,000 in annual tax. Based on the, on the formulas for 2011, 2010, 2011, both in education revenue sharing county tax, all of which your state valuation is part of, we use that formula to determine that out of that 105,000, you would lose, in essence, lose, see a reduction in your school subsidy of 34,500, a reduction in your municipal revenue sharing of 8,600, and an increase in your county tax. So at the end, you start, you, at the beginning, you started out with 105, but because of these adverse adjustments, in the end, you net only 57,500, basically. The way I look at that is the town loses 45 cents of every unsheltered dollar of new valuation, and that's, that's the case here in Lisbon. I've done these things all around the state. Sometimes it's as much as 60. So we're not as bad, we're not as bad as, as other communities, but it's still, that's a significant adverse adjustment that we've suffered there. So how does the sheltering in relation to TIF work? TIF allows the municipality to shelter new value in a district from the computation of its state subsidies and county taxes. The sheltering allows the municipality to retain all or a portion of those new tax revenues that would otherwise have gone to covering the cost of reduced subsidies or higher county taxes. The use of revenues captured and retained through TIF shelter is restricted, and it must be spent on economic development activities. Let's look at what that may look like. So there's our 5 million again, and let's say this is in a TIF district now, and we get 105,000, same thing, but as you can see, we suffer no adverse impact because it's sheltered, so there's no adjustment to any of those subsidies. So in the end, you net the full 105,000. And again, though, the asterisk is, it's restricted to economic development. So our proposal. The Dingly Press TIF, it, it's actually, it was a 20-year district that was established in 1993 in a town meeting, and then amended five years later for an addition, and added an additional five years to that term. So basically, a 25-year TIF. And it was to support new company investment there. There were two different expansion projects, and the investment on the part of Dingling was $31 million over those two expansion projects. It retained more than 125 existing jobs and created more than 140 new jobs. And 50% of the taxes, as we talked about, we draw the line around the district and all that, 50% of those taxes resulting from that increased assessed value in the district has been returned to the company since 93 in two credit enhancement agreements. That's the legal conveyance. I call them CEAs. That's the legal conveyance. It's a legal agreement between us and the town, I mean, us and the, and the company, sorry. And so, you know, look at the results. The Dingly Press TIF, the OAV of that district when you started in 93 was 6 million. The value of that district today is 24.4 million as of 4/1/10. Presently, 350 people are employed at that company's Lisbon Road facility. So you got an increased commercial tax base, you got more jobs, the town of Lisbon's investment through TIF yielded the desired results, I'd say. But yet, we're missing an opportunity. Since district establishment, only 50% of the increased assessed value has been captured each year in these, in this TIF and thus sheltered from the state subsidy and county tax formula. The remaining 50% of the increased assessed value is unsheltered and goes directly to your municipal general fund. This unsheltered value results in a loss of state subsidies and an increase in county tax. And let's look at what, this is real-world stuff. This is last year. To some degree, an estimate based on, on the sheltered, on the subsidy loss, but this is, this is, I'm going to guess, a pretty good estimate of what the impact of that 50% unsheltered value. Starting at the top, the increased assessed value of the district as of last 4/1 was Taxes on that yielded a total of 221,452. The Dingly 2 credit enhancement, of which this is related to, 110 went to the company in that credit enhancement agreement. The other 110, the other 50%, went to the general fund unsheltered, and as a result, and this is again, based on the formulas from last year, as a result, we suffered a loss in education subsidy of 36,000, a loss of state revenue sharing subsidy of 9,100, and an increase in county tax of 4,600. So that's a $50,000 adverse adjustment. So we started at 110, but we really had to devote 50 of that to making up what we'd lost in subsidies and increased taxes. So our net at the end of the day was 60,636. Now, if we were to march forward tonight and amend, it would look like this. Obviously, we just, we went through the same sort of exercise. We start with the increased assessed value and the taxes, 221,000. The Dingly 2 credit enhancement agreement, 110,726. The town, then, by amending tonight, would shelter that other 50%. That 110,000 would go in a, in a development account, and we would, as a result, suffer no loss in education subsidy and so forth. So, actually, I had to repeat there, but anyways, no total adverse adjustment of zero. So you keep the full 110,000. And I might even argue to you, as you begin to see, you know, because you, this has been unsheltered for so long, when you shelter it, you're going to, in fact, see an increase in your state subsidy, I would argue. So, you know, that 50,000 that we lost in this current tax year, in effect, wouldn't we get that back? So I'm arguing you not only keep the 110, but you actually see a, a positive impact, maybe a little bit more in the school education subsidy and revenue sharing. You pay a little bit less in county tax. So, moving on with the proposal. The town of Lisbon has supported my office, the Office of Economic and Community Development, for three decades. So my question is, shouldn't we support it with sheltered TIF dollars? We've long ago made the decision that we want to do economic development in town. The TIF statute enables us to use TIF dollars to pay for these sort of activities, so shouldn't we do that and then suffer no adverse impact as a result? And I should mention that when the town did an amendment in 1998 to support the second expansion project, it was the town's intent to capture the full 100% of the value for just this purpose. Unfortunately, the town was never able to really quantify for Maine DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development, who is the ultimate sort of, they review it to ensure compliance with statute, and they were never able to satisfy DECD. They were never able to say specifically, we're going to pay for the economic development office, it'll cost this much. We're going to pay for this, it'll cost this much, unfortunately. But we can correct that tonight. So, another important point, the proposed amendment, it does not affect the company in any way. The 50% in that tax increment revenues continues to go to the company for the remaining seven years. There's no interruption in our relationship with them or the revenue that we committed to them through that credit enhancement agreement in 1998. This is about how we, the town, choose to handle our share of revenues. So the amendment would adjust the captured assessed value from its present level at 50% to 100% for the final seven years of the TIF term, and that's 2011, 2012 through 2017, 2018, seven more years. And we would do that for the purpose of using town TIF revenues to support town economic and community development department budget and other authorized development-related expenses, because we're going to have to put some of these things down on paper, and we're going to have to put them in front of DECD. I've done that in, in January in a very informal meeting with the Director of Tax Incentive Financing up there, and he gave me every indication that he would approve our work plan if we put it forward this time. So what, what's the proposed municipal work plan? It's the Town Economic and Community Development Annual Budget. What you've been doing for 30 years, salary fringe operations. Also, what you've been doing in recent years, annual Moxy Festival sponsorship. There's about $2,500 that you appropriate every year and direct towards that big event in our town. Additionally, annual AVCOG, Andrus Coggin Valley Council of Government, membership dues are also eligible to be paid for with the TIF, TIF revenues. And so, you know, there's planning services up there, transportation, land use, there's economic development services, there's all kinds of things that we, as a town, as a member of AVCOG, pay for through our dues. We can now do that with TIF revenues. I would also suggest that matching funds, these TIF funds could be used as matching funds to private donations, the donations that our local businesses make to revitalization efforts, like Moxy, but also the Main Street program. This work plan would give you the flexibility to do that in the future, direct matching funds. If a, if a company, one of our leading companies, devotes a certain amount of money to a revitalization project, we can match that if we so choose. I want to underline, the proposed work plan is essentially a menu of options for funding consideration every single year. It doesn't lock you into anything but that option, all right? So the losses, and, and another important note to me, the loss of revenues to the general fund, because I'm, I'm suggesting to you through this amendment that you're going to remove a, a stream of funding that goes to the general fund, but at the same time, you're also removing, you're offsetting that by a reduction in the expenses that you support by a general, through the general fund. So that, in my view, a wash. And the amendment doesn't change the annual municipal budget process. That's still done exactly how you've always done it. It doesn't exempt me or my office from that process at all. You still set the bar there every year, but this is, the only change is the revenue stream that supports those activities. And that's it. That's what I have. Thanks for your patience. And any questions, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
To try and take a whack at them.
Any questions from the council first?
It's basically the reason we do a TIF, that's the town's benefit. I mean, that's one of, one of the advantages. We haven't been taking advantage of it.
Well, and that's, that's, you know, when I, when I arrived, that was one of the first things I did was review those, and, and it's, it's clear that, and this is a great opportunity to, to, you know, to fix that and, and still get seven good years out of it, so.
And you explained it well. I mean, one of the first things I came on council was, from being a business, business owner in town, is I always thought of a TIF as a gift, you know? Someone's getting a gift. And unfortunately, until you understand the full process, it's.
Right.
The town that's actually benefiting as much if, if the program is put to its full use, and unfortunately, we really haven't been using the full use of a lot of our TIFs.
And, and, and I would agree. And I would, and I would argue that, in reality, we're in a very competitive environment nowadays, and, and you were in 1993, and you were again in 1998. It's a competitive environment, and if communities are going to go where the best, where it best suits them in a lot of different ways, location and everything else, workforce, but also in terms of the kind of support they can get to make investments in their community and create jobs. And so, again, I mean, I hope that that's remembered from this presentation tonight is that, you know, what you did in 93 and 98, it worked, and, you know, it's a tool that you should consider using again in the future when the right project comes along.
All right, any questions from the public? Go ahead, Mr. Fillmore.
Okay, as I understand what he's asking us to do, he's asking us to change from unsheltered to sheltered. By doing this, we're going to lose X number of dollars from the general fund that we're putting back in there. Now, he believes that the, that the money is going to be put into the economic development, and it's covering the costs that we're already paying him, but I don't believe that's true, because I believe the fame, he gets money from the fame, he gets money with a resolving loan fund, he gets money from housing grant that's from the state, he gets community development block grant from the federal government. These are all monies coming into that program already that we don't provide money for. That's already there. And the, he has a signed account. And the, he has a sign account for signs in the town, and he has a USDA one. So he's got money coming in from other sources. So what he's asking us to do is take the general fund's money and transfer it over to those, to his funds. Now, with the budget coming up, and we have a great big budget, asking for more dollars from the people, and we're gonna take this money out of the general fund, where do you think we're gonna get the money to pay for the expenses this year? It's gonna come in another tax increase next year because we're gonna go, oh, we didn't know we were gonna have this. The budget in the town goes this way. We buy everything we want, and we don't worry about what's money comes in until we have to pay for it. And then because nobody took into consideration prior to the budget what our taxes are and what we're going to get from the state and federal government, okay, we have to suck up the difference. That's gonna raise our taxes again this year. We already went up an exorbitant amount of taxes this year. We don't need to do it next year just to cover the rest of it. You guys already know and have told us, we're gonna be short on state funds. Now you're gonna take more money out of the general fund. We're not gonna be able to pay for it anymore with raising our taxes if you keep doing this. He has money coming in, okay? The money from the economic program cannot be put into the general fund, as I understand it. So he's increasing his budget at no benefit to the town, other than we have money in that program, that particular program, for more development, and I can appreciate that. But he's already got money coming in for that, and we need it in the general fund and not in his budget.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. Sir, did you wanna speak also?
I've got a very simple question. My name is Dexter Parsons, eighty-seven Summer Street. I thought your comparisons were real good, but it's pretty hard to absorb so much at once. Is it possible that this could be made into a hard copy?
Oh, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Okay. I just wanna, and where would those be available?
Uh, I can provide it to you through my office.
Okay, fine.
If you give me a call, I can give you my card.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Any further questions from the public? All right, anything further from council? Okay, well, thank you, Scott.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, I'll close this public hearing now. Next item, Toila.
Is under consent agenda, order two thousand eleven twenty-two, to approve the minutes of January twenty-five, two thousand eleven, and a criminal forfeiture.
So move.
One second.
What is, go ahead, Roger.
What is the criminal forfeiture?
Consent agenda items, Mr. Chairman, are not up for discussion. They have to be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
So can we vote on something?
We'll have a vote, and if you don't agree with it, then you vote no, and then you take it out, I guess. That would be my understanding. Am I correct on that?
If you'd like to remove it, I guess is that, that would be an amendment to remove it now before you vote.
Yeah, but we're, we already have a motion on the floor, so you have to vote on that.
There's a sheet in your packet that explains what the criminal forfeiture is. It was for the money confiscated from the arrest.
Not up for discussion.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? And those opposed?
For pass six one.
Next item?
Is under the council orders, resolutions and ordinances, order two thousand eleven twenty-three, to approve the Second Amendment to the Dingly Press Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program as presented.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Do I have any discussion from council on that issue?
I think we've got a pretty hard budget we're looking at, and I think that, uh, Mr. Fillmore brings forth some pretty interesting points that we ought to take into consideration. Are we gonna cut jobs? We're gonna send people down the street with no work so that we can fund economic development in this community? Are we really ready for that? Because that's what we're looking at, folks. We're gonna have to come up with this money somewhere. Now, when we say to the people of your community, sorry, but we're cutting your job because we're gonna put this hundred and ten thousand dollars of community development, are the people of this community ready to handle that? I say, I don't believe so. I would rather see a family feed, a man feed his family than economic development in this, in this environment. I'm sorry, but I, I would never support that.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
I, I would just like to point out that, um, I understand where Mr. Fillmore's coming from. However, I believe, and Scott, you correct me if I'm wrong, the revolving loan funds and all these block grants and that cannot be used to pay for salaries, cannot be used to cover the rest of the expense line items in the municipal budget. These are items, those funds can be used to give other businesses loans, to help them do additional improvements, right? And those types of things. And I believe there's only less, very small percentage of like a, a five percent of something that can be utilized to, and we've done it in the past, to support an administrative person, to help with the audits and doing things like that. But the bulk of, the majority of that money is only for us to have, to delve out to other businesses, um, within the community, to help prosper our community. It does not offset any of the expenses in his budget. So it is basically, as Scott pointed out, a wash from the general fund to his budget for washing that out. And I think we get to pay for a bunch of other programs like, um, Moxie Days, we might be able to increase their support and stuff like that based on the dollar funds.
Scott, would you like to respond to that?
Just that, um, it has in, in the, in the recent past, I've only seen recent budgets and then the one we're presently in, there has been a, a very, very small percentage of the loan fund used annually, one loan fund, one, not the half dozen that we've just heard described, but one. A very small percentage of that funding has been used to, to support the salary of your director. Now, what I would propose in the future is instead we lend that money and put that into the pool and rather use these TIF revenues. And again, to leverage that opportunity, the other fifty percent is. But I just wanna be clear because it's been said, you know, I have community development block grant money, and I have all kinds of pools of money. That may have happened ten, fifteen years ago. It's not happening right now. And I'm not aware of, of any of those monies that are available to support my department at this point in time. So just in the interest of being clear, there is one, the Rural Development Intermediary Relending Program allows you a small percentage. I'm proposing to you, let's lend that money. Let's get better about getting out there and marketing that money because we have gone a year now without a serious loan proposal in front of our committee. And so let, let me get out there and try to lend that money. And so that's why I'm saying, rather than to support salary with that, let's lend it, let's get in our business pockets and, and so they can create jobs and create investment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll first start off by saying, I'm not gonna profess to be an expert in the EPS and the way that the monies gets reimbursed to us when it comes to education. However, I have been around long enough to know that when I look at this figure of thirty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars that you used in the presentation tonight, that is about ten percent of, let's say, the co-curricular budget in the school, um, department's budget. That is ten percent of what this town contributes above and beyond what's paid for or reimbursed by the EPS in education. It's also my understanding that the decrease that we would receive in the state revenue sharing subsidy is money that we lose, that we could be keeping in this community, and then we end up paying more money to the Andruscoggin County, um, in tax. And so it only makes sense that we would want to keep all of the dollars that we could in this community. It isn't financing totally the Economic Development Department. What we need to understand, when we look at the budgets, both the municipal side of the budget and the schools department's side of the budget, the eighty percent of the budget is salaries and benefits. And if we're talking a one point seven five increase in pay and we have increases in health insurance, we need to understand that that's where the biggest part of our budget's coming from. It's not fifty thousand dollars in economic development. And we're talking fifty thousand dollars compared to a seven million dollar municipal budget. People need to think about that, and they need to look into it.
Scott, can you just explain what is coming out of economic development? We have a budget for economic development, and basically, from my understanding, the
budget we have now for that department would come out of this money, correct?
Right.
It's not over and above that.
No, no, it's, it's simply replacing this from the, what you're typically paying for it from the general fund. You're paying from it from a dedicated development fund. You're not paying any more than you've ever paid. You're paying the same amount. And, and again, it's an annual decision made, uh, through our typical municipal budget process. You'll decide how much, you know, salary you pay your director, how many pens and pencils and, and whatever it might be, postage, um, will, will go to that department. So, um, it's no more. We're not spending anymore. We're just simply taking it from a different revenue stream. And it's, it's what our state legislature intended to have happen with this tax increment financing program when it created it in the nineteen eighties. And we're simply, what we're doing is, is, is using the program to our fullest advantage. Up until now, we've done great with it, but we can do better. Um, and, and so that was the proposal.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, um, we, we had a presentation a while back where we were told we're supposed to vote, tell why we vote yes or no, so I, I've put my, my two cents in. The time I've been counsel, unfortunately, this is a third economic developer, development person we've seen in town, which hopefully you'll stick around and we can actually-
I'd love to. I would love to.
But one thing I've learned from you and the other two, that what you're saying is nothing new. It's every, every meeting that we've sat back and had explained about TIFs, every person that's been in your seats told us we are really unfortunate in not taking advantage of the scenario that we could be in. We are actually doing something that was intended to do, but not doing it wisely. We're not getting a big bang for the buck. And so it's not just you. I mean, everybody before you was trying to explain to the council that we really need to move forward and make this better. And as Laurie stated, the biggest way we can fix our budgets with revenue, and, and as far as I'm concerned, with you sitting there, anything we can do to support economic development in town, regardless of how it's done, if we, and, and again, it's not the idea of stealing money from the town to pay a, to pay a department. It's the idea of using money in town smartly to make more money and bring more money in. So anything we can do to support you and hopefully give you a better run at it than we've probably done in the past, I would support a hundred percent.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Roger.
I don't wanna look at your department and, and trash you. That's not what my intent is.
I understand.
What my intent is, is to make the people of this community understand, Mr. Eldredge brought forth a list of projects that were necessity projects in the town of Lisbon. Bridge on Fisher Road, hundred and ten thousand. We have got to do it, or if somebody crashes through, we're looking at lawsuits. Building improvements that have to be done because buildings are being ruined at this time. These are the things that I'm looking at.
Sure.
And to take money out of the budget this year, when we are facing these things for economic development at this time, there's nothing is right now really going on. I think that it's something that we've gotta consider very much in this town because we're, we're facing some serious issues in different places of this community. And that's the point, not to say that I wouldn't like to give you all the money you need for economic development, we don't have it.
And I just wanna say that, from what I can see of the figures, it looks like, as you say, it's basically a wash, that we're just, you know, it, it's, there's a lot of figures there that aren't just in the line of salary that we're talking, that would basically be canceled out here. So it's not like we're adding a hundred and ten thousand in new spending for economic development. We're just trying to basically shield that extra money, get back that forty thousand or so in extra revenues from the state. So I think, it makes sense to me. Any further comments from the council? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Do we need a vote there? Do we take a vote? Okay, do I hear a motion on that?
The motion was made.
Motion was made, okay. Okay, so all those in favor? And those opposed?
Okay.
Motion passes.
Six one.
Next item?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next item is order two thousand eleven twenty-four, to set the rate of interest for delinquent taxes.
Every year, the treasurer, uh, state of May, sends us a notice of what the maximum interest rate we can charge for delinquent taxes. In the past, you have generally lowered that amount that was recommended. Uh, this past year, you chose not to do anything with the interest rate. Again, this is for the, not this year, but it's for the upcoming year. So what is your pleasure?
Do I hear a motion on that?
What is the rate right now?
Seven.
You said it at seven, but you, you chose not to enforce that because, uh, until the end of the, this fiscal year. So nobody, right now, nobody's paying any interest on any delinquent taxes.
How is that looking as far as delinquencies?
I think we're, we're doing fairly well in, in collection. What is our percentage at this point? Ninety-four?
On our total tax, on our total tax benefit, we're like, we're just collecting-
For the first half.
That's good.
The first half, okay.
So we're, we're doing very well, better than last year, actually.
Can I make a motion? We keep it the same as it is now?
Well, actually, right now it's zero, so we would actually move it to seven.
Begin enforcing it?
Enforcing the penalty of, of someone not paying their taxes on time.
Yes.
So your motion is to begin enforcing the-
No, not to enforce.
Not to enforce.
May I, may I say something? Is, uh, now, well, this tax, is this gonna come on the next tax bill or is it gonna be-
This is for the taxes that you commit for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve fiscal year. It's, it does not-
Have any to do with the tax bill right now?
Right now, no. It will be the year, the following year taxes.
Yeah, okay.
Following year.
Following year.
Mark, may I?
Yes, sir.
The, um, one of the things I've, I've had discussion with people from town is the idea of, um, having incentive to pay your taxes on time. And unfortunately, right now, there's, that what we have in place is really no incentive for people to pay taxes on time. We have a lot of good-hearted people that are paying their taxes on time, which shows. I mean, we're fifty-two percent collected. But with having no penalty, that means that we actually could have businesses in town that owe millions of dollars in taxes, just wait till the last day of the year and pay. Unfortunately, that would really put us in a financial burden in town, not collecting revenues. And a smart businessman, if he could leave money in the bank for the whole year and not have any, any penalties, if he can make four percent in the bank, if you're not being penalized, that's one thing. But if you're only making four percent in the bank and it's gonna cost you seven percent for penalty, then it's wiser to pay your taxes. So for the people that, that have been paying their taxes on time, um, I think it's only in our benefit to actually, um, say thank you and actually allow them not to pay a penalty. And the people that choose to, um, hang on to it to pay the penalty. Um, in this town, we actually have a program where if anybody has a hardship, they can come into town, they can actually have that waived. So if there is a really hardship case, they can come in and actually still get the benefit of not having any interest. Um, but to, um, serve the people that do pay the taxes on time, I think it's only fair to actually have some type of penalty for the people that don't pay it on time.
Yeah, well, this is for next year.
Next year. Yes, for next year, exactly.
For next year, yes. We don't think we wanna change anything we did for this year.
Yep.
Can I withdraw the suggestion I made?
Okay.
It makes sense now.
So do I hear a motion on this issue?
I would make a motion to set next year's tax rate at seven percent.
Your second?
My second.
Okay, I'll take a second from Councilor Beckford. Okay, any further discussion from council? Any comments from the public? Ma'am, please step up to the podium.
Yes, good evening. Debbie Berry, twenty-one Huey Street, Lisbon Falls, Maine. Fernand made a comment regarding an incentive to pay taxes on time. Are you willing to maybe go, like, if you pay on time, you can get a five percent discount?
Unfortunately, I don't think we can afford the five percent from the big, the bigger, the small players won't be a big deal, but the bigger players, that five percent may actually hurt us a lot more than what any other argument we're talking about, yeah.
As she mentioned, if you have fifty-two percent collected and if you could get up to, let's say, eighty percent with a five percent deduction, that's something to think about, I guess.
What she's actually mentioning, the fifty, the fifty-two percent is awesome because it's actually, we've collected more than we should've for the half of the year. There are people that choose to pay their taxes a hundred percent at the beginning of the year, so they don't break it up in halves. So, um, that's kinda where she, I believe that, that extra percentage has come from. Some people prefer just to pay it one lump sum at the beginning of the year, which actually benefits- benefits us. So it actually, it actually helps us. And I would love to give those people a incentive for doing that, but unfortunately, I think it would actually, at this point in time, would have a hard time justifying that loss, maybe.
Just of the people that are delayed, if they were to receive an incentive, everybody works on incentives that if you say, hey, 5%, if you pay ahead, something about?
Absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, 7-0.
Next item?
Order 2011-25, 2011, 2012 interagency requests.
Every year, we get requests from some of the local nonprofits throughout the region, not just Lisbon, to make donations for the services they provide to many of the citizens in the community. Historically, the only nonprofit that you have been willing to fund was Laco. And, but every year, I present this to you to see if you want to change that process, or do you want to still maintain? It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could you tell us what the amount is that we committed to Laco in previous year? I don't remember exactly what it was, and I didn't see it in here.
Did you tell me that, Steve? I don't know that off the top of my head.
Off the top of my head, I think it's around $4,000. No, more? Two? $2,500?
Either a thousand or two, something like that.
Yeah, it's fairly.
Not a lot.
Not very much money. But for them, it helps them tremendously.
Jim, may I? Also, Steve, isn't there, unless it's changed, isn't there actually, we have Laco to use? They, are they still in the MTM?
They're still in the MTM building, yes.
And there's a charge to them for that?
No charge to them for that.
So we actually, on top of the idea of helping them a little bit financially, we actually give them an area to allow them to do their business, so.
All right, any discussion from council on that issue?
I mean, I would recommend that we stay at status quo with everything that's going on.
I think it's a benefit, not a benefit, but it's a necessity that's being used more now than ever, so.
It'd be nice if we could fund all these other programs, but I just think we don't have the money to afford that. We can barely afford our own expenses. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing that, we will move to a vote. Do I have a motion on this issue?
You don't need to.
Okay. Don't need a motion, okay. Okay, next item, Twyla.
Is under Other Business, Finance Director's Report.
So for the month of January, looking at the revenues, we, at the tax commitment account, we are $244,000 uncollected, if you will, due to the tax adjustment that we made. Excise tax, we're looking approximately 51% collected. Last year, for the month of January, we took in $61,000, and this year, we took in around $71,000 for the month. So we're looking very profitable with excise tax this year. The state revenue sharing is 61% collected. We had $70,000 come in for January. Last year, at this time, we were only 48% collected on a budget of $1 million. So the budget was a little different, but we were far under-collected compared to this year. So as always with this, things are looking to be on track with revenue sharing collection, but we'll continue to monitor it through the remainder of the year. The transfer station brought in another $9,000 for the month of January. We are now 65% collected on those revenues at a year-to-date total of $81,000. Looking at a whole, on our Parks and Recreation revenue, we are 99% collected. The month of January brought in another $1,600 in the before-after-school care and tracker programs that are provided through the Rec Department. And Beaver Park brought in $500 in park fees for the month of January. So it looks like people are going out there to enjoy the snow. And as I just stated previously, we are 52% collected on our total tax commitment for the year, and this is better than we were at this point last year, which was only 50%. Again, that 52% represents the total tax commitment. That does not mean we received everything from everybody that we should have for the first half of the payment. It just means some people were diligent and paid their entire tax bill upfront. And some people only paid half, and some people, a lot of people have not paid at all. Tax bill reminders went out on the second-half payment on February 7th, and we are just beginning to see that money come in, so things will hopefully start looking up from a cash flow perspective because they were getting pretty tight with the lack of interest. Is there any questions on the revenue side?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One question, just on the general assistance. Is it just because we haven't filed any, or is it the state? Because we have expenditures, so we should be getting 50% of that back.
Right. I believe it's from the state level that we, they haven't dispersed any funds for that. Moving on to the expenses, as it's been all year round, we're sticking to the budget. Well, we are 95% expended on the legal charges, and so it's fairly reasonable to assume that we will be over-expended in that line. Under miscellaneous general government, we expended $90,000 in January. That reflects the first half of the TIF payments that went out, based on the revised tax bills. Winter Public Works has $24,000 remaining for their sand salt purchases, so with any luck, we'll be favorable by year-end on that budget item. And other than that, everything else is looking to be right on track with what we budgeted. So unless you have any questions for me, that's my for you.
Do you have any questions from council?
Thank you. Public Works. I figured that was 24 over. I thought that was where she was going, but.
All right, thank you. Next item, Twyla?
It's under Town Manager's Report.
The only change I have from what I had provided you was the rail service public hearing, which was scheduled for tomorrow night at AVCOG. It's their final report. That has been moved to March 16th at 7:00 PM at AVCOG, so if you'd like to attend, mark that on your calendar. Last time they had their first meeting, it was pretty informative and well-attended, so it's, I get to be interesting to hear. That's all I really have, is additional.
Okay. Next item?
Is under?
Chief Galpo has approached me and said that he wants to read a letter.
Councilor, thank you for letting me approach or read this letter. It's dated, it's to Councilor Chair Mark Lund and Steve Eldridge. It's dated on the January 26, 2011, and it's comments, reflecting comments by a counselor that I'd like to read this letter to the council group. So it says, "Mr. Lund, I'm writing this letter in rebuttal to the January 24 council meeting discussion on 39 Village Street property. During the meeting, Counselor Cody publicly stated, and I will quote, 'To burn a person's house down and plaster the internet with pictures of it KKK-style,' unquote. I find this accusation to be unethical, very offensive, and completely out of line coming from a leader in our community. The Lisbon Fire Department has served this community for over 150 years. The service members have put in countless hours of hard work and training in protection of this municipality. That's time away from loving family during the hardest of times, to including everything from ice storms to their neighbor's house flooding, all for a small stipend in order to keep the taxes down and fulfill the civic duty. This is no way close to what the KKK was established for or what they represent. I, as a department head, am embarrassed by this outburst. It's a black eye for this town and all the departments for a counselor to accuse a department in which he governs of such a comparison. I would hope that you, as a council, will deal with such an action, and Mr. Cody, as a man, would publicly apologize to the members which are in this room of this dedicated and always professional fire department. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Mr. Lund, are you looking for a rebuttal on that?
I'd like to hear an apology.
I'm not going to give an apology, and I'll tell you why. When we choose to tear down a building in the community and burn the building, we could demolish it and burn it as a pile of rubble. But to burn the house down, and there are pictures out there, I've seen them myself, of people standing in the street applauding, to me, does not look real well for the town of Lisbon. And when I made the comment, I was very irate at the pictures that I had been seeing shown that evening of people standing in the street applauding as a man's house is being burned down. Whether you like the house or not, whether you like the person or not, the pictures being put on the internet were totally unnecessary, in my opinion. The house could have been torn down to a pile of rubble and burned as a pile of rubble. But to burn the house down with flames coming out the windows, I think was a little unnecessary. And to further this, this does not take away from the hard work by the fire department or any one of you people that are involved in the fire department. I did not say that I felt that you people didn't do your jobs, or did I correct any of you for not doing your jobs? I feel you're doing excellent job, but I just didn't think that the pictures of a man's home, regardless of the reason, being burned, needed to be put on the internet. And that's why I said what I said. And as far as the firefighters are concerned, if I offended you, I apologize. For putting the pictures on the internet and who is responsible for that, I will not apologize to. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel.
Thank you, Roger. Do I have any further comments on that from council?
I'd just like to make a comment. I believe that there's a lot of opportunities that our town has for training, and one of the opportunities they use for training is the idea of using a full structure. And I would be almost willing to bet that there wasn't a firefighter that evening that was there that had nothing more than the intention of training and actually doing a town service. So the idea of them applauding, and if there is such a picture, I think it's taken totally out of context the idea of what they're actually doing and the professional way they do it. Unfortunately, it's not every day that they have an opportunity to do training on live burns with a house. And then the idea of training on a pile of rubble really is, doesn't serve the, what they would need to do is in a live circumstance with a house that's still intact. So again, the idea of the photos, if you go through the website, and you're going to find many photos of many burns, from the mill burning down to car accidents to, and I think it's, I don't, I will not, I will not leave myself to believe that the pictures were put on the internet in any mean or careless way. It was more a firefighter showing pictures of a training, what they did for the town. That'd be my point.
Okay, I do want to make the point, too, that it saves us a lot of money by burning it rather than demolishing it, because demolition certainly has an expense there, and, you know, people talk about saving money, but it seems like whenever we come to an actual place to save money, nobody really wants to go through with it. Mr. Fillmore, you have a comment?
I'm Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. Fern, have you ever tried to get the fire department burn a building down for you?
I haven't had one burnt myself, but I know many in town that they have.
Okay. The requirements for a fire department, and the fire department can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you've got to take out the rugs and about, you know, everything else for, before they'll burn it down for training. And then they charge you for training, by the way. As far as putting them out on the internet, I think they should have taken them and kept them for training classes for the fire department. That would have been perfectly acceptable. But I support Roger in the fact that only, the fact that the pictures should never have been put on the internet. If they're training pictures for training, which use acknowledged, then they should be for these guys. And they should be for their trainees when they come on, and they should be used at the fire station, okay, as training devices, showing them how to do things and things like that. I think that's perfectly proper. Burn a person's house down, okay, and I'm sure, were the rugs out, guys? There were no rugs in there or any of the things? If you were to burn a house down, it was as you burned it?
It didn't meet all the criteria that we could actually burn down.
Okay. Okay. So the thing is, my feeling is, they should have these for training films. I support that. Putting it on the internet, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. Would you like to approach the podium, Chief?
I just have one comment. It's unfortunate that yet again, we're wasting time at a council level over a useless internet blog. Same as we were told before. Useless internet blog. If you don't like it, don't read it. And that goes both ways, I guess, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question for Chief Galpo. Was that the first house you guys have ever burned down and put the pictures on the internet?
No, ma'am. As Counselor Larry Shallid stated, there's pictures up for everything that we do.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Roger.
There were, there were extreme differences in this case, Gina, you well know that. And the individual was a man of color, and it was not in good taste.
Remove this along.
Yes.
Would recommend we move this along, thanks.
Okay. All right, next item, Twyla?
Excuse me, Mark. Senator Mason is here. I think you'd like to report from Augusta.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Chairman, Mr. Eldridge, members of the council. Lots happened since I've been here last. I'll just give you a brief update, and I will be here after, so if the public wants to ask me questions, I'd be more than happy to field them. Since I was last here, I was appointed to two committees. I serve on, as the chairman of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. That has been the proverbial drink out of the fire hose, because you have to learn a lot. You're dealing with public safety issues as well as the seven prison systems in the state, so it's been a lot of fun, it's been very challenging, and we are starting to get our bills referred to us, so we're working on getting those out of committee as fast as we can so that the legislature can vote on it and the governor can sign if needed. I also serve on the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, so I get to oversee what's happening in our education system. We were very happy to know that the governor has no planned cuts in education, but only plans to fund it further. So we were very happy about that last week in his budget address at the legislature. This week, we had the chance to have about 250 kids from LCS come and visit the Capitol with myself and Representative Kraft. We had a great time with the kids. They got to learn a little bit about the Capitol, a little bit about us as legislators and what we do there. We had a really great time with the kids. Other than that, we are moving right along in the session. We haven't really had any bills go through the full process yet. We've, the governor signed one bill, and it was to move the fiscal year of the Mount Desert Island School District. So we haven't really been able to say that we've done too much in the legislature yet, but we're working on it. But other than that, we're trucking right along. So thanks for the time to let me update you, and I'd be happy to field any questions from the public after the, after your session is over. I don't want to hold you up, so thank you. Thank you, Senator Mason. All right, next item, Twyla?
Next item, unless we're finishing up on it, would be audience participation. Okay, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward to use the microphone.
Mr. Fillmore, go ahead.
I'm Larry Fillmore, I'm from Lisbon. I listened to Fern say to the Economic Developer Director that we would do everything in the town to support him. I've asked three times, God has asked, that we do an intern, independent audit, forensic audit, of the department in order to support him, because there are so many questions about funding that's been out of that, come out of that development in the past years. Now, we were told by Mr. Eldridge that there is an independent audit done every year, and that is true. It is for the town, and the lady that was here gave us a wonderful briefing. It is for the town, and the lady that was here gave us a wonderful briefing, and she said, the only thing she does in economic development is do a balance sheet, and that's it. They don't do any forensic analysis or anything like that. Now, we've asked, you want to support it, but yet you blow it off. Every time we bring it up, you blow it off. I don't call that supporting anybody. You want to answer that one? I mean, anybody, I don't care. I'm just wanting to know why we try to support a guy and nobody goes along with it.
Certainly, Fern.
One of the things that we've seen all the way through, and I've seen as councillor, and maybe other councils have, maybe they haven't, is the idea that the checks and balances that happen in the town. There was a circumstance that did happen prior to me becoming as councillor, which just before I got here, of unfortunately, funds that had actually been not handled properly. But I can strongly say, after that happened, there's been probably more checks and balances put into economic development than anywhere else in town. So the idea of thinking that I would feel that that department is actually somehow uncontrolled, or has expenses that are not justified, or actually amiss, I would think it would be almost impossible, from what I see, and what I see internally and from what I order to say. A balance sheet is a balance sheet. I mean, they do justify the idea of the money coming in and money going out. So the idea of just blowing it off, I don't think, when you talk about the audit committee and the other committees in town, and the public people, citizens in town that serve on the committees that overview everything our economic developer does, every dollar that's spent, there is multiple brains and manpower and volunteer time that goes into spending every one of those dollars. So the idea of blowing it off, I don't think is an accurate figure. The idea of our department being just loose and allowing to write checks, or whatever, I don't think, there's nothing in me, from sitting on the council and seeing what that department does, that feels that there's anything to see or any benefit that would come from another audit of that department. I think, I would go back and say just what I said, I would support Scott in anything he does, because that's the only benefit we have in our town to try to move us forward. The idea of an audit, I don't, another audit, I don't see would be any benefit to that department or the town itself to expend money to actually know something we already know. And that's just how I feel. I mean, maybe I look at it from a different way, but there's a lot of people that work with that department that do the checks and balances, that feel pretty good, and they're pretty well-known people in town. They're actually very, people are very involved in the, not just the social end of town, but more the business climate of town, that I trust very well. And if these people come in and say that our department's running well, and everything's being checked to balance the way it should, I will believe them.
I agree with you totally, that since then, the audits have been, I mean, the checks and balances have been put in, I agree with you totally. Everything is running fine. What I'm worried about is there are several loans that have been in question, prior to the checks and balances being put in, that are in question.
I can honestly say that I know of, those loans have been looked at and reviewed by multiple people, and as a councillor, there's not one loan that I know of that is in question. And maybe another councillor or the manager can actually say anything different than that. Unless you know something different than I know as a councillor, being what I know, there's not one of those loans that hasn't been reviewed that is in question. Maybe someone can share more light on it than me, but you would know something that I wouldn't.
Okay, I'm gathering information on this now. I will present it to the board, okay, when I have factual information.
And that would be very good.
Right now, I'm just checking into it, okay? And there's some things that have come up that really are very, very disturbing to me, okay? And that's the reason that I wanted an independent audit done, okay? It's not now, because everything has been corrected. Checks and balances are in place. But the funding that was done prior to the checks and balances being put in are what I'm questioning, okay? So I'm doing the research, I'm not ready to present it to you. I was hoping that instead of me having to do all the work, that we'd have an independent audit do it. That way, nobody can blame me for picking on you people again, and again, and again, okay? So that was my concern on this, okay? Next thing. I want to talk about the council and the tax bill. We've been through this tax bill, been through it, and I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the way that it was done. I'm sick of the problems we have every year with the tax bills, and I think we need to get that corrected. Now, I'm going to give you a prime example of what I'm talking about. And you can correct me, Mike, any time that you want to, that I say something that's not correct. The council voted to bring the town assessed value from 56% to 80%. Is that correct? Whoever wants to answer that, go ahead.
I believe that's what we wrote on, yes.
And we were going to use the figure of 1.32 to use as a calculation from the 2010 bill, property value, for the 2011 commitment. Not correct or correct?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I want to make sure is that, as we're moving forward with your presentation, that we're not, as a rule of state, that we're not trying to look for a debate. So the idea of having a debate is something, as a councillor, I think we've spoke to, of not going in that direction. So as a councillor, if you want to use your time to promote or give us information, that's fine, but don't actually look for a debate or look for an answer.
I'm not looking for a debate, I'm just looking to make sure that my figures are accurate before I present this to you. Because if you use the 1.32 as the tax assessment ratio, okay, and you apply it to the taxes for 2010, and I'm going to give you mine. The land was $17,560. You multiply that times 1.32, you get, let me see if I have my figures right here, $23,179.20. But you know what's on my tax bill? That's a difference of $22. That isn't what we were saying here. We said we were going to raise the 1.32 to the tax bills, to the tax value of the property. Then I went to my building. My building was $45,590. I apply the 1.32, I get $60,178, okay, and change. On my tax bill, it's $60,200, $22 more. What they have done, and this is called creative accounting, they rounded up. Perfectly legal. But they didn't tell us that. Not only that, okay, but think about it for a minute, mine is only $43 difference. Multiply that times the property in the town, you got a big figure, okay? Also, this is not what you people told us was going to happen. So why do we have a surprise? You gave us the information, supposed to be accurate, but yet, it didn't come out that way. And think about this, what happens if it was $62,101? Now it's going to be $200. That's $99 that person's going to lose. It's not his tax, he doesn't own that. You admit that that's not the assessed value. So why are you charging him for something that's not his assessed value? Crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. And I can't answer those questions right now. The appropriate person to talk to about that would be the assessor. I don't have that kind of figures in front of me. Any further comments from the public?
Thank you. Again, my name is Dexter Parsons. I have resided at 87 Summer Street for 40-plus years, and I rise tonight in an attempt to get an answer from the town, which I've been unsuccessful in getting despite efforts for over a year. Thank you. I sent copies of documents, along with a cover letter to each council member on January 8th, in reference to this matter. If I could give you a brief overview, and this will be brief, I don't intend to take a lot of your time. A subdivision application was submitted in 2006 to the planning board for property at 89 Summer Street, which abuts my property. This did not progress smoothly, with final approval after three meetings of the planning board. As part of the final approval, there were conditions, and after a while, observing one in particular not being performed, I wondered how long it would be permitted to go without being addressed. I discovered that there was an ordinance addressing a completion date, but that there had been unset for the subdivision, obviously allowing the condition I refer to to be deferred indefinitely. I hired an advisor, and after a review of the ordinance addressing completion, he wrote Attorney Terrio, which prompted Attorney Terrio's letter of September 2nd, 2009, which was in your packets, stating the board and developer had agreed to set a completion date, but he had reservations that the ordinance, in fact, applied to this particular subdivision. Attorney Terrio closed his letter inviting any questions to be addressed to him. My advisor could find nothing that would exempt the subdivision, and availed himself of Attorney Terrio's invitation for questions. The following transpired. My advisor wrote a letter with a question to Attorney Terrio on September 21st, 2009, no response. My advisor sent a follow-up letter to Attorney Terrio, 1118, 2009, he gave no response. I wrote a letter to Mr. Eldridge on 4/12/2010, with copies of the letters that had been sent to Attorney Terrio, no response. I sent a follow-up letter to Mr. Eldridge, June 23rd, 2010, certified mail, return receipt requested. I sent a letter to the council, to the attention of the then-chairman on August 18th, 2010, no response. And then there was my letter to the councillors on January 8th, 2011, which, obviously, there was no response, because it was sent to you and you have not responded, obviously. Since I believe that the date of completion should have been set at the planning board's final approval, but wasn't set until over two and a half years later, which could have altered at least one item, I believe I am deserving of an answer to why Attorney Terrio believes that the ordinance requiring a completion date did not apply. So there can be judgment whether the reason has validity or is in error, or if the completion date set two and a half years afterwards was just a courtesy to me personally. I respectfully request the commitment of an answer from the council at this time, and I do hope the response isn't, does any member of the public wish to speak at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, and I want to apologize to the council for not getting back to you sooner, and I'd like to hear why we haven't responded to you earlier. I'm sorry about that. And Mr. Terrio, I know is here, and I will see if he can offer a reason for your explanation to your question.
Okay, I mean, with all this period of time, since it started, you know, back in, the first letter went out in September of 2009, and I've been fighting this now for a year and a half, you know, I really think that I should have an answer. I mean, I think that there should be some transparency here, and I think the town should be, you know, accounting to the people, and not just sending a letter and ignoring it. Even when you send a certified mail, you don't get any attention. It's ignored. I certainly would be very happy to have this, and I do hope that, you know, that I will get an answer on this. And even though I do realize that the next thing will be, does any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Good evening. Mark Bayou, I'm the deputy fire chief. I reside here in Lisbon. First of all, I'd like to say, chief, thank you for speaking out against the foolishness. I think as a department, we appreciate that you did that for us. I, as the deputy fire chief for the ET Smith Hose Company, and speaking on behalf of the members of the company, and I'm sure probably on behalf of the members of the Lisbon Falls Fire Company as well, we as members of the department, we take pride and honor in the duties that we perform on a daily basis, in emergency and non-emergency activities for the town of Lisbon. And given the green light go-ahead from the town manager, the town's legal counsel, who had the ruling from the main Supreme Court, I believe, to, you know, take possession of the home and do as needed to be done and destroy it, we as firefighters should not have been made to feel ashamed or embarrassed in any way, shape, or form for what we did for training purposes. We cleared a piece of town-acquired property, money was saved from the demolition to the town, and I think this slanderous activity is unreasonable, is unethical, and completely uncalled for. It's stated in the town charter in Section 74-201, under Working Rules for Town Council, that all members of the town council shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to town employees, which firefighters are town employees, and to the public members appearing before the town council, and shall refrain at all times from rude and derogatory comments, reflections as to integrity, abusive comments and statements as to motives and personalities. It's in my opinion that someone forgot to read the section of the charter, because using the KKK as a reference is definitely rude, derogatory, and reflects upon the integrity of the entire Lisbon Fire Department, and we all demand a formal apology. I don't believe the apology you gave this evening was appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Mr. Fillmore, you already used your five minutes.
I have two sessions I can speak at, according to the charter.
I'll let you speak, but don't press it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. The only thing I was going to say is this. Mr. Parsons sends correspondence to the town manager. His lawyer sends correspondence to our lawyer, the town lawyer, and they don't get a response. Now, I think it's common courtesy, if you're given an official correspondence and you're asking questions, as a taxpayer in this town, you deserve some kind of an answer or a response. But it seems as though, and I've seen this done to me personally, and it doesn't make a difference whether you write it, get up here and ask questions, or whatever, it appears to me personally, that the council, the town manager, go on a philosophy, if you don't like the question, ignore it, it will go away. And I don't believe that in this oath of office that you people took, where it says that you're going to respect and observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the town of Lisbon, that that complies with that. And I think that we put you into office, the taxpayers of Lisbon empowered you people to make the tough decisions which are in the best interest of this community. And I don't think blowing things off is in the best interest of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right.
Dorothy Fitzgerald, I'm a resident of Lisbon Falls. Mr. Parsons has contacted me as well previously, and just as a private citizen, and sent me a whole package of correspondence and everything. Who is responsible for answers? Who is responsible for actually setting a date and Who is responsible for actually setting a date and setting this right?
This whole process that Mr. Parsons is referencing went through the planning board process. They are a separate quasi-judicial group. They do not report to me, or they do not report to the town council or the council. They are standalone organization, and they make decisions. Mr. Parsons has, over the last three years since I have been here, questioned a subdivision project that was going on. From my knowledge, and Mr. Terrio can confirm this, that project went back to the planning board. Mr. Parsons was here. The planning board made a decision, amended the subdivision, and finished that project. It was done. There was no other questions. If he had questions, he should probably address them to the planning board, because they're the ones who make the decisions and the ones who finish the project and finish it in front of them, not the town manager, not the town attorney, not the council. And my understanding was that project was done and amended and fixed, whatever what the issue was. Story over. That's all we have, is that the project was finished, and it was amended and taken care of. Period.
Hasn't anyone sent Mr. Parsons a letter to that effect that, with the explanation that you just gave now? I don't know if he's satisfied with that explanation.
Well, I get the impression that he's not satisfied with the decision that the planning board made, and I can't change that decision for him.
I guess, I'm a little confused. I...
I am too.
The planning board is a separate entity, and they don't answer to anyone?
I believe you can appeal it to the appeals board, I think, is the root, if you have an issue with a planning board decision.
And they don't have anything to do with the town council or the town manager? I mean, this is all town business. No?
You're right. Yes.
Yes, what?
You are correct. They do town business. They, if there is a project or an ordinance changed that goes to them, those have to come before the council to be approved. They make recommendations. They do the same thing with the capital improvement budget. They do the same thing with the comprehensive plan. But when there's a site plan review, this body does not get involved in that. It all goes before the planning board and follows the ordinances and the rules that are set out that get approved by this group and also state law, but that's as far as it goes when it comes to a site plan review and a subdivision ordinance or subdivision approval. This project was approved. Everything was in order, and that's, and you move on. Unless you want to question it and get legal counsel involved and approach and send something to the town to start a legal process, we have not seen that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dot. Mr. Parsons, go ahead.
Speak again?
Yes.
It would seem to me, again, my name is Dexter Parsons, 87 Summer Street. It would seem to me, Mr. Eldridge, that when my attorney wrote, Attorney Terrio, it would seem to me at that particular point that he should have gone back and told my attorney, I'm sorry, you're at the wrong group. I can't help you out. You should go to the planning board. From what you're telling me, that's the way that it should have been done. Am I correct?
That would be my recommendation, to get on the planning board agenda and question the decision.
Why didn't Attorney Terrio tell my attorney that?
I can't answer that question.
All right, Dot, go ahead.
And I guess, on a follow-up, a courtesy letter to Mr. Parsons, I would think, should have been sent with, I just, I'm just reiterating what I said before. He should have had a courtesy letter stating the procedure and what should be done and what his, what his alternative is and how to go forward. I'm disappointed that a letter was not sent to him, a courtesy letter. He has been at this for some time now. He's a citizen of the town. He's a taxpayer, and I find it disturbing that taxpayers are not given the courtesy that this should be given.
Thank you, Dot. Can we look into that to see that, make sure that's resolved?
Yep.
Okay. Let's get you and Terrio together and look at that and make sure that works.
We can do that.
Correct, we can respond to Mr. Parsons. All right?
Yep.
All right, any further comments from the public? Okay, well, we will move on to the next item then.
Which is council communications.
Any council communications?
Yes, go ahead, Roger. Mr. Vayou, before you leave, please. I followed the structure that we spoke of earlier on Main Street in Lisbon as a member of the appeals board over the last seven, six or seven years. That was something that I was very aware of what was going on, and I did not approve personally of the way it was handled. When I saw the pictures on the internet, I felt it was not in very good taste. What I said was probably a little abrasive, but I felt that those pictures are a little abrasive also. Do I apologize if I offended you personally? Yes, I do very much, and I'm sorry. And I take it back in any way to you personally or any of the firefighters of this community. But when it comes to the pictures that were put on that internet of that structure burning, I will not apologize. I do not feel that was in good taste. And I hope you accept my apology to you personally and to your firefighters. They're an outstanding group of individuals, but I do not agree with what was done in this particular case.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, go ahead, Fern.
Just on a, something that's actually coming up with the, I serve on the facilities committee for the school system, and we had a meeting last night where we are looking at, a lot of people have seen the improvements in front of the high school and the sign and a lot of other things that have been happening in the high school to try to make it more efficient. Just want to make everybody aware that in the upcoming months that there will be some new, hopefully, improvements are going to be laid out that will actually make the, you know, one or more of the schools more efficient. So I just wanted to give heads up that the facility committee is still working very strong and trying to actually make our schools better. And hopefully, everybody stays aware, because at some point in time, the town will have to go to vote, as they always do for any projects on the improvements that we're actually working on now. So just want to plant a seed that we are working and we're trying to use the monies that we have very, very, very safely, how's that, to do the most we can. So just give a little information that the facility committee is still working on, and as a town, we will have to, at some point in time, approve a little bit more of approving, improvements that we have been doing already.
Thank you, Fern. Anyone else? All right. Well, I want to say that I saw the new managerial report that you sent out with all the department heads had their little section out. That was very nice, and it's a really good step forward towards getting more communication with the town out there. If you haven't seen that, make sure you sign up for that. Is that on the town website? You can sign up for that. It gives you a lot of information of what's going on in each town department. It's a great thing to find out all the stuff that's happening in town. All right, anything further?
I have one additional thing. There was an email that came out to the counselors, and it was actually giving kudos to some, one of the, I'm going to say it all wrong, but one of, Jason, who works for Public Works, one of the plow truck drivers. It happens to actually be in my neighborhood that he plows, and I do have to say that I think that this year is by far the best plow job. And I know that we had a lot of snow in a short period of time, so, you know, I'm very pleased with the condition of the roads, and I think it goes a long way to recognize when people have done a good job instead of being negative all the time and pointing out everything that people do wrong. It may or may not be the time to say this, but over a period of time, I have listened to a lot of comments that are made, particularly during audience participation, and I've actually been extremely troubled by some of the issues that come up. At times, it's on-demand that issues are brought up that we're not aware of, and so counselors have no opportunity to look into matters, to provide a rebuttal, to provide any response, to provide any education, to questions and or comments that are posed to us during audience participation. It's my understanding, and again, I could be wrong, that we are not required to give an answer, but it is frustrating for me to sit here and feel like my intelligence is being insulted by the fact that I have no opportunity to prepare in most situations for things that are going to be said. And so I have listened to other town council meetings, and I've listened to how other meetings and looked at how other meetings in our community, such as our school board meetings, are held, and there is no audience participation session in those meetings. And I guess I would say at this point, through this council of communication session, that in the future, we look very closely at eliminating the audience participation part of the agenda and operate this council meeting as a business meeting. If townspeople, and I'm not saying that I'm not interested in what people have to say or what they would like for us to respond back on, but I would say that if there's an issue that's bothering somebody, to please go to the department head, or if you feel that it's an issue that comes up to the council, write a letter to us, give a phone call to us, but don't blindside us when you come into the meeting. I will say, I have been on this council for a little over a year, and I've expressed my frustration to some of my fellow counselors, to the town manager, to the chair. I truly feel that at times, my intelligence and my integrity is insulted and questioned. And if it continues, I will not stay on this board. I have a lot more going on in my life, professionally and personally, to be harassed the way that I'm harassed. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Laurie. All right. Next item, Tyler.
Is under executive session. Order 2011-26 to go into executive session per one MRSA, Section 405-6A, personnel matters.
Do we want to do the workshop first before the executive session? I'm just thinking if you have people here, if the audience, that might like to see the workshop, whether it'd be better to do executive session after that, but...
Chair, may I?
Yes.
I believe the workshop is going to be very lengthy. It may take a couple hours. So, I mean, I would assume that we'd get to executive session. Exactly, if we could, yes.
I'll have to pay you. Okay, we'll do that then.
It's easier to actually suspend part of their workshop than it is with the executive session. That's my opinion.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Order passed 7-0.
And we'll try to make it brief.
All right.
And we'll meet over in that room, conference room.
Okay.